Special meeting of April 28th, April 24th. To section three of executive order 29-20 issued by Department of Public Affairs, March 17th, 2020. Today's our council meetings, the public conferencing and members of the public can observe the rest of the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to it phonetically, please call 1-669-224-3412. Access code is 786-997-777. Or you can get it through the city's live webcast. So before we begin the meeting, I want to check with or announce that for those of you who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion. You can also email your request to cityclerk@templicity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item which to provide comments. Alright, so I will now call the meeting order if we could have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, we'll now move on to item three, our public comment. I'll begin by asking the clerk if there are any email requests to speak.
Yes, Mayor. I received one public email comment from Jerry Jambasian. I will read it into the record. "Good evening, Mayor Chavez and councilmembers. I have every confidence in the four remaining members to choose a replacement for Councilmember Fish. This would be a 46-month appointment, which is the longest appointment I have ever seen. This should not have any bearing on my recommendation, but the city could ill afford a $95,000 election with the financial hit from the COVID-19 pandemic. I pray for wisdom as you make this decision for our city. Sincerely, Jerry Jambasian." Mayor, I do not have any additional email public comments.
Okay, for those calling in, we will now unmute your microphones. In order to avoid callers from speaking over each other, please state your name so that you can be added to the public comment list. The city clerk will call upon you when it is your turn to comment. Please be reminded that you have up to three minutes to speak. So do we have any callers? Hearing none, I will close public comment and we will now move on to item number four, our new business. "Consideration of options for filling vacant council seat. On April 21st, April 21st, 2020, Councilmember Fish resigned from her position on the city council effective immediately. Per section 602 of the city's charter, within 30 days of a vacancy, city council can appoint a new member or decide to fill the vacancy by election." So we will begin with a presentation, I believe, by attorney Greg Murphy. So Mr. Murphy, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have too much to add to what the mayor has just said. Obviously, there's a written gender report for you. A few pieces of advice. If one piece, as the mayor said, if the council does not act to appoint within 30 days, then an election must be held within six months. That would mean that if the council were to say today that you were not going to appoint, that you absolutely are going to an election, the election has to come within six months of today. So my recommendation to you would be to wait until we are at least at the point where that election could take place consolidated with the November presidential election. That is to say, if you are leaning towards calling an election, I'd like that decision to be finalized at a future meeting. If instead you are leaning towards moving forward with an appointment, you can make that decision today and give us direction on how to do so. The reason that's important, as the mayor said, you have 30 days to act to appoint. Seven of those days are gone, so we have 21 days left. In order to get a field of candidates for you to review and ultimately make an appointment, it will take some time, 10 days, potentially 14 days. And then we'll want to have enough time for you to hold at least one meeting and potentially two meetings in case you need some time to talk amongst yourselves about this. So with that, I'm going to defer the rest of my comments to answering any questions that you might have and providing any other legal advice I might be able to provide. But as I say, at this point, the two very important things to note are, if you wish to go forward with appointment, we're on an extremely compressed timeframe and we'll get started in the morning. And if you wish to consider election, that would be something I'd like you to hold over a little bit so that we can ultimately make that decision at a time when we would be able to consolidate the election with the November election. As the city clerk has said, a consolidated election costs $95,000 roughly. A standalone election would cost significantly more, and that would be something we'd want to take into account as well. With that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, sir.
Before we get to the questions, I just, a point of clarification, Greg. You indicated another, we have 30 days, the clock started ticking, I believe, last Tuesday when we received the resignation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you said that, so I mean, seven days are gone, but I think you said we have, means we have 21 days. Wouldn't that be 23 days?
23 days.
Okay. Missed anything? Alright, okay. Start with council questions and I'll start with Councilmember Mann first. Councilmember, do you have any questions at this point?
Yes, Mayor Chavez. For Mr. Murphy, can you clarify for us? If council were to appoint someone, would that person, how would that affect that person's term limits in terms of our current ordinance?
Certainly, sir, yes. Under section 502 of the charter, a person that has been appointed to serve two years or more, or actually a person that has been elected or appointed to serve two years or more, that counts as one term. If the person is elected or appointed to serve two years or less, then it does not count. So if this were all taking place two years from now, then the person that you appoint would not have their time counted as a term. But whoever the new fifth council member is, that person will have one term counted. Which in this case makes sense. If you appoint, the person will have approximately three years and 10 months. So as a practical matter, that makes good sense that that would count as a term.
Okay, so it seems either way, whether it's a point or an election, that person would count towards one full term?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, Councilmember Quist, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
No questions.
I have one quick question, Greg. So I'm taking it from your report. There are no such things as any emergency exemptions available or anything because of the coronavirus situation. It makes it a little bit more difficult, of course. We haven't seen any governor's orders come down in this particular area, I'm assuming?
No, unfortunately, there is nothing, nothing dealing with appointment or filling vacancies. In fact, I will say that considering the election route, and as we said in the report, the timeframe for nomination petition or for gathering signatures is July 3rd through August 7th. We don't even have, as of today, an executive order regarding signature gathering. Do I expect one? Yes, I do. But we don't have it today, so I can't even give you advice today as to how that process might be different if we decide to go that route. But I think the governor has been focused on other things. I think the November election will soon be a major issue for him, but as yet, he's had his mind in other places. But certainly nothing about filling vacancies, sir.
Now, this 30-day vacancy is, obviously, it's in our city charter. Or there's 30 days to fill by vacancy is in our city charter. Is that something common to most cities? It seems like it's a, it's a very short time period to make an important decision such as...
In a very short time period, sir. In fact, the general law would give 60 days. So your neighbor to the south, Rosemead, for example, as a general law city, they would have 60 days to make that appointment. And if the charter were silent on the matter, then you would as well have 60 days, but because the charter calls out 30. And in fairly forceful language says, if you can't make a decision within 30 days, then you must go to election. It's clear that when the charter was adopted, it was adopted with the purpose of having an appointment either be a very fast process or not at all.
And I'm assuming that this can always be changed at some point.
Well. Charters can be amended, yes, sir.
Of course. Alright, I have no further questions. Alright, so I'm going to open up public comment. First of all, ask our city clerk if there are any public comment emails that she has received.
No, Mayor, I do not.
Okay, and do we have anyone? Are you going to unmute? Go ahead and unmute. We'll ask if there are any verbal questions. Hearing none, I will close comments. Alright, we're now in a position for closing comments and questions, and I'll go ahead and begin with Councilmember Mann.
I thank you, Mayor Chavez. First, thank you for, Mr. Murphy, for the report. I think it makes it very clear what our choices are. We have a very short timeframe of when appointment. I think from a matter of principle, I could understand some people saying, some, I've seen just some other cities in the San Gabriel Valley that have gone through a process like this with vacancies, and some have gone election and others have gone appointment. I could understand the rationale for either. But I think, my understanding is, actually, my council colleagues can attest to it better than I can, having gone through the experience of going through the appointment process. At least for me, there's a precedence that we've done it before. And I think as a council, we should at least explore that option. Because it seems like if for whatever reason the appointment route does not pan out, then it defaults back to election anyway. But I believe as a council, we should use all tools available to us, especially in these trying times.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Quist? Cindy, are you got, you have your voice on? Can't hear you. Okay, why don't we, why don't we go to Councilmember U, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem U, while we're waiting for Cindy to come back online? Go ahead.
Yeah.
You know, you're kind of breaking up, Cindy. Why don't you, I'm going to go to Mayor Pro Tem U and then we'll try to get back to you in a minute. Go ahead, Vince.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I concur with Councilmember Mann. I can, I can hear, I can't remember.
I don't think you can. Maybe we could have someone call Cindy and ask her to tell her that we're having trouble with her video and listening. Okay, go ahead, Vince.
So I concur with Councilmember Mann's comments that in this prime times, especially that it would be election, you know, collection of signatures and, I mean, we all hope that this COVID-19 issue will be over shortly, very, very soon. But however, you know, things not going to be back to normal for a little bit of time, so I think we should go, should go to more safe routes. And also in, in terms of finance, we already talked about last week, in the week, last couple meetings. The hit on the city finance due to COVID-19. Extra staff, pay, decrease in revenue. It just, I think it makes financial sense for us to not to spend the 95 minimum, $95,000 minimum, or even higher for independent events. So I will be supportive of an appointment process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Cindy, can you hear us? Brian, can you have someone, somebody contact her and see what's going on?
Mayor Chavez? I'm assisting Mayor Sternquist right now.
Okay.
Yes. Our internet connection's not, not good.
Yeah. Hi Cindy, can you hear us now? Okay. Well, we'll hold a, we'll wait a little, a few seconds and see. Technology is a great thing, except when it... I'm, I'm reminded of, you guys probably remember all the excuses in school that, you know, my, my dog ate my homework and all those things. Now, of course, teaching remotely, we don't get those same excuses, but we get different ones, you know? Computer went out, you know, my internet went out.
They're going to try to call her. They're going to have, they're going to ask Councilmembers Sternquist to call in just from a cell phone.
I think that's a good idea. Alright, we'll wait a few minutes. While we're waiting for her to join, I'll go ahead and go forward with my comments. I concur with Mayor Pro Tem U and Councilmember Mann. Having gone through this already, Vince, if you remember, we did given, of course, as common upon, given the cost of an election, which is very prohibitive, especially in today's world. Also, the logistics of collecting signatures and going through all that may be a little troublesome and may be difficult as well. And so I think, given the situation, I think appointment process would probably suit this situation better. My question, though, is, I know we're going to, being asked to decide on which option that we're going to go with, but are we also going to discuss tonight how the procedurals and the dates and everything that we're going to use and how we're going to do it? Moving on forward from this, is that something that we're going to do tonight or is that something that is going to come back to us at another time?
Sir, I think to be fair to the candidates as well as fair to the four of you, we will need to discuss that tonight. The city clerk and I have worked up some concepts for this, but we didn't want to put them, didn't want to put them in a staff report because we didn't want to appear to be leading you in one way or another.
Okay.
It appears Councilmember Sternquist is back, so I'll pause.
Okay. Cindy, are you there? Councilmember Sternquist, can you hear me? No, still don't have her. Go ahead, Greg.
So the thought was that we would use an application, if it's the council's direction to us, one way to move forward would be to seek applications. We would use a slightly modified version of your commissioner application, which is quite thorough. Talks about candidate backgrounds, talks about candidate involvement in Temple City, how they view the job at hand, how much they know about City Hall. If directed to move forward with that document, we could have that on the website tomorrow. And the city clerk would be able to call the newspaper tomorrow and give additional notice in the newspaper on Thursday that it were available. We could keep it available, we believe, until next Friday, which would give people essentially 10 days. And in this time of COVID-19, we think that people would have enough time over 10 days to work through the form and submit it. We could then get it to all of you, and we'd still have plenty of time to, for you to review the form and then to have a meeting, and as I've said previously, a second meeting if need be.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Sternquist, we can hear you. Are you there?
I, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Great. Yeah, we can hear you. So we're right in the middle of our council comments, so we'll go ahead and put you on if you have any comments or further questions regarding this.
Okay, I didn't have the opportunity to hear Vincent, but I heard William.
Okay. William, just so you know, him and Vincent pretty much agreed that the proper, or at least in their opinion, moving forward with an appointment process over an election process. And I, in my comments, also agree with that.
Okay, I concur with all of you. I think it's the, I mean, it's just essential and this unprecedented times, and I think it's just, you know, something we need to move forward to be fiscally responsible. We don't know what kind of hit we're going to take with sales tax, and I just think it's probably the best way to go to save our city quite a bit of money.
Okay, great. Alright, well, thank you very much for those comments. While we were waiting for you to come back online, Mr. Murphy was describing to us some potential dates and options and how to get the word out. Greg, if you want to briefly go over those again for Councilmember Sternquist, so she can hear those, and then, and then we'll go move from there.
Cindy, if you could, Councilmember Sternquist, if you could turn off your video, that will help.
I shut it off now. Sorry.
Just as a reminder to the procedures that you undertake, that's the decision of the council as well. That's, that's under your prerogatives on what procedures you elect to take in terms of the, if you are elected slot process of appointment, the procedures and process you undertake, that's under your guys' discretion, that's under the council's discretion.
No, I appreciate that, and we were just at this point, I think, getting an idea of maybe some, some potential actions that we can take. And of course, what I intend to do is after we hear from Mr. Murphy, perhaps we can go back to council and see if there's anything that they would like to see added or taken away, if that's okay.
Thank you, sir. And yes, as, as you, Mr. Mayor, and the Mayor Pro Tem would be much more aware than, than I, because I wasn't there at the time. The last time that an appointment was made, it involved council members nominating candidates to be interviewed, those candidates being interviewed in an open forum and then a selection process. In speaking with the city clerk, one of the things that we looked at, and this is for Councilmember Sternquist especially, we could publish in the newspaper on Thursday, which would require us to give notice tomorrow for publication Thursday, that we are advertising to fill the vacant council member seat. And this is, this goes to if the council is seeking to have people apply rather than having US council members nominate candidates. Applications, we believe, could be made available as early as tomorrow if we base them on the commissioner application that you already have, which is a very thorough application as compared to most commissioner applications in other cities. So it provides you a lot of information. We believe that that application could be on the street and be turned in to the city hall by close of business on Friday, May 8th. Would then be collated and turned over to the council.
Will there be a definite cutoff time then? Is that, is that the record?
I, I would think, I think we have to so that we can get it to you. And then, as I say, if we, we make it due a week from this Friday, then that gives you the weekend and into the next week to review. You'll have your regular meeting on Tuesday night, at which point we can consider adding an agenda item that would allow you to talk about the applications that you've received and give direction as to how you would like to go forward from there. Obviously, there'd be some kind of special meeting, but we can give you full timeframes at that point. You'll have already looked at a series of applicants and you can give us more, more instruction as to how you want to do this. Another option, obviously, is to simply schedule another special meeting so that we can get more direction from you after you've had some time to think about it. But in short, and I've gone on too long already, we'd like to hear from you. We'd like to hear what the four of you are most comfortable with, and then we will make happen whatever it is that you want to see happen.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so based on city attorney's comments, I would like to hear from our, from the council members regarding any further questions or comments on what we've just discussed. So, for Mann, do you have any, anything further clarification or question?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Council, Councilmember Sternquist, you still with us?
Yes, no other questions.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem U?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do take exception to what the city attorney had just said. I think the appointment process is completely up to the city council tonight. I do not equate the selection of commissioners as the same as selection of city council member. I don't think an open, while we might have gone through that before, having gone through that in particular myself, having done it twice, I don't believe it is an open selection where we just pick anybody that we don't know. It has to be somebody that actually, in my opinion, knows the community, able to step in and help in particular with some pretty difficult financial decisions to be made ahead of us. Both financially, economically, and, and, and taking us through perhaps a pretty deep question potentially coming up. I don't think personally it is time that we just consider anybody applying up. If it's somebody that we don't know already, if it's somebody that's not a known quantity, I would have some trouble with it. I don't, I, I don't think you can decide just by one simple interview or just look at a resume. I would much rather ask the council members to think about who they, who we want to nominate, knowing what we know about the community. Instead of an open process, I mean, people are afraid to call us and contact us if they should. They all know where to find us. But I don't necessarily think it brings any value to the process of having an open, published in the newspaper kind of a nom, of invitation. I think it's very, very different than where we really want to expand the circle of possible future city leaders. In the terms, in the case of a potential city council member, I think that should be somebody that is a known person in the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Greg, if you, if you want to clarify your comment, I don't want to... Mayor Pro Tem U, I believe that the commissioners were simply the use of the, of the application. I don't think that the city attorney, Murphy, was in any way trying to state that the appointment of this council member in any way is similar to selecting a, a city, city commissioner. I believe it was simply just a way of perhaps finding out who out there would be interested. I, I don't have a problem with that, and at the same time, I think Vince and, and you and I went through this a number of years ago, and, and both of us can recall, and you're absolutely correct, that, that each of us were given the opportunity to present, I think it was two candidates, and then, and then the council met with all those candidates and conducted the interviews live, of course, at the time. I believe even, even under this process of finding out who, who, who is out there, who would like to be considered, that would not, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Murphy, but that would not prohibit us from perhaps ourselves reaching out and suggesting to people who we may believe would be qualified to perhaps put in an application to be considered. I don't think there's any prohibition against that as well under this process. So I think, I think under this, this, this particular situation, I think being as... this particular situation, I think being as open and transparent as we possibly can, uh, and putting that out to the community as a whole. I mean, we're all going through some difficult times and, and trying to figure it out as we go. And there's no, of course, perfect answer. And I, and I agree with you Vince, that it's going to be difficult to get a, to get a, um, a real read on someone, let's say that none of us know. Uh, it's hard to, to of course, look at an application and even after having an interview or two, uh, even, even making that determination. I agree with you. And certainly I agree with you from the fact that whoever we decide to fill in this position should be somebody who we feel as a council can pretty much hit the ground running and have some experience as far as, uh, you know, being in such a leadership role. Cause as we all know, you know, it's not brain surgery, but of course, there is a learning curve to it as well. And so I agree from that point. And I, I just believe that by opening it up and, and, and at least finding out who is interested, uh, a- at least we, we have something to start with and work with. Uh, that way, uh, uh, and I'm sure, I, I have no doubt that those applications will also include not only people that we may not be aware of, although we all between, I think the four of us, we know quite a minute, quite a bit of people in the city. Uh, but we'll also, uh, encourage those who we also are, are familiar with and who we believe would be good candidates to consider as well. So, um, you know, that's, that's kinda how I feel on the whole process. Of course, you know, whatever we decide to do tonight, uh, you know, obviously we will, we'll move forward. Keep in mind that, of course, time is of the essence. So, I, I, I do agree and, and, uh, if we can get some consensus on that, if, um, you know, how we're going to go about it, again, um, getting these applicants, uh, before us and what time of time, uh, constraints we have. And I don't really mind. I, and I don't think anyone else does. Uh, taking, calling, whatever amount of special meetings we need to, to do this. Obviously, this is a very important decision uh, for us and for, yeah, probably one of the most important decisions we're gonna make in a long time, considering the ramifications. And so, uh, whatever amount of meetings it takes, I think, uh, I think all of us are willing to do that. So, um.
Tom, are we, are we deciding now under those comments that I just said, I didn't have any, or is that in another part?
No, we're, we're talking about now the, the procedural. So if you, I'm sorry if you misunderstood, but if you have anything else you would like to add, you can go.
Oh, okay. Um, I agree with Vincent. I think if it was, you know, different times, I'm a product of the appointment process that was done when we had, um, the two or three council members had to resign, um, and were indicted. And that process was, I believe each council member brought two people to the table. And I have to say that the, the candidates that each council member brought could have, you know, at the time, have done unequally as good a job as I could have. They were all excellent candidates. The, um, council members at the time knew them well personally, their backgrounds, what they've done in the community. And so I feel that that's the process that I would like to see. I mean, we weren't in, although it was a political, very political time for our city because of the political implications of the resignation. It wasn't, um, a, a difficult time financially. And fiscally, it was, you know, this, this is unknown, charters, waters unknown at this point. And I think we really need to look to a group of people that we think can pretty much hit this ground running. So I, I agree with Vincent. I would like to see the process where each council member brings four to candidates. If they chose, that would be eight people, which is a lot of people to interview and, you know, and, and do it through telecommunications. That's also, uh, you know, a challenge by not having interviews in person. So I think it's essential. It's just time to really look to people that we individually as council members think would be great representatives of our city. And all of us have been on city council for quite some time. So we know what those qualifications and needs are. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Would, would anybody have any follow-up thoughts on that? Uh, uh, William, do you have anything that you would like to add?
No, I, I think, um, I, I'm actually glad Mayor Pro Tem U and, and Councilmember Sternquist, uh, kinda explained the thought process and the rationale. Um, for someone less familiar with that process, um, what, what they said makes a lot of sense. Um, I would, I would have no issue with, um, the nom, the nomination process being done that way. Um, uh, honestly, I, I wouldn't, I would actually wouldn't have a problem with the open application process either. But, um, in, in some ways that the nomination is very similar to a open process anyways, like Mayor Pro Tem mentioned. Um, if anyone was even interested or qualified for this position, one, they know where to reach us to talk about this. Secondly, I would assume they'd be listening on this meeting or, um, they would be following up and, and listening to what, what council is talking about now and, and know that that's the process that, that, um, we're gonna be moving forward with. So, um, I, I don't have m- much more to add besides that.
Thank you. Vince, anything further?
Uh, no, I think, uh, I suppose Mayor, then like, even though we haven't taken a vote, I think the general consensus is appointment. I think we just need to, uh, agree on how to do the nomination. Um, why, do appreciate, uh, what the Mr. City Attorney had said, but, uh, we heard from other council members as well and, um, we have, uh, either doing what the Mr. City Attorney has suggested or perhaps doing like a nomination. I suggest that we, uh, discuss that.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I would, I would propose, and I, I take to heart what, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem said, and I, it does seem to me that, uh, there are two council members strongly in favor of a, a nomination process and two that are more than happy to accept it. I would simply ask, uh, the four of you, uh, if you believe that you can have nominees in hand by next Tuesday. I believe next Tuesday is our next council meeting and we would add an agenda item, um, so that, uh, you could discuss nominees. And at that time, um, the four of you can also give us direction as to when you would like to hold special meetings to do the interviews so that we can continue to make the timeline of, um, of May twenty-one. But if that's acceptable to the four of you, then we will make sure that that gets put together for you.
Can I make a motion to do that?
Hold on, hold on. One, one second first before I'd like a couple more comments if you don't mind. Um, I don't, I, again, I, I have no problem with the nomination process. Uh, keep in mind though that it, it, there is a possibility, I think this happened Vince, you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, that when we made the nomination process, uh, we had, we had some lap, we had some lap over. In other words, I, I think a couple of council members had the same people on their list. And so there is a possibility that we may not end up necessarily with eight candidates. Uh, we could end up with six or five or whatever that may be, but so be it. I guess that's for discussion another day. Um, but, uh, I guess a good starting point would be for, uh, and, and again, if anybody has a problem with that, we can talk about it. Uh, I, as I've heard, perhaps each council member, we have four council members currently, if each would maybe propose two, uh, that they feel strongly about, uh, that would give us a pool of eight. Uh, keep in mind though that you may want to uh, have others that maybe as a backup in case, uh, you feel that, you know, we do have a lot of overlap and we only end up with three or four. Um, you know, I think.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering Mayor, if, if that's what we land up with is four, then it's four. I mean, I, I don't see why, why we need to worry about having more than a certain amount.
No, no, and I, I'm not saying it's a certain amount. I'm just saying that, that, understand that even though each of us, let's say, for example, are, are asked to bring two candidates to the table, uh, those candidates may overlap. So, uh, just so that we all understand. That, you know, we may.
I think that's what happened at the last time and I think we had, yeah, I think we had four candidates.
Yeah, I don't remember what we actually ended up with, but, um, but you know, yeah, whatever it is, it is. And just a real quick point on, I think, uh, uh, I think Cindy, you brought it up on the interviews, uh, online. You know, we just finished conducting, uh, online interviews for our executive committee on JPIA, and it did actually work out pretty well. Uh, the candidate was there, all the, uh, other committee members were there. We had the opportunity to see them, to ask questions, to go back and forth. And, you know, given the technology we have today, similar to what we're doing now, I think it'll work out. So, uh, just something we need to.
Well, I, I'm speaking from my perspective, the last two minutes, I mean, two meetings, I haven't had really great success on my iPad. So, so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Brian Cook to work on getting me a new device because uh, it's been really frustrating for the last few minutes, I mean, meetings anyway. So Brian and I can talk about that.
Alright, well, we'll, we'll work that out, I'm sure. Okay, good.
Okay.
Alright, are there any further comments, questions?
I do have a question, uh, Mr. Mayor. Actually, for our city attorney. So, um, the staff report said to nominate or not nominate, the appointment must be May, hard to May twenty-first, meaning that uh, twenty-first too late, right? Has to be done on, uh, like the twentieth or before the twentieth. And is that, uh, the swearing in or just the, uh, voting of the council?
It would be the voting. What we will do that day, uh, it says that, it, it also says it has to be made by resolution. So we would have a resolution in place. And we would ask you to, on one vote, approve the candidate and then immediately take another vote to adopt the resolution. And we will have a resolution that we will literally handwrite the candidate's name in so that it's approved that day. We won't make you come to an extra meeting that's unnecessary.
So just looking at the calendar here, let's say, uh, with a meeting coming up on the fifth, um, we can do on the fifth, or we have a last meeting for the month, regular meeting on the ninth. That's kind of cutting it kind tight, doesn't it? If we could not come to an agreement, then we'll give up with just a couple of days. Uh, one, one more day.
Alright, well, we'll, make sure that we follow all those. Alright, okay. Uh, unless there are any further questions, I will go ahead and entertain a motion time. Anybody would like to take a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, move that we adopt the nomination process and each, um, council member bring names to the forefront of people that you think would be good replacements for Councilmember Fish.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any objection? Hearing then, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. So, um, uh, just a follow-up, quick follow-up. So Greg, we'll have that as a matter on our agenda for next week?
Yes, sir.
And we will further discuss and, uh, cut out for us. So, uh, hopefully by that time, we'll have, uh, some, some names to, uh, to go with, and then we'll move forward from that point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Would, uh, next week at a time where the, we interview the candidates as well?
Well, that's to be determined, I think. I think, uh, at this point, we will, uh, by next week, I think the goal is by next Tuesday to have the names in place. And then we'll set, I think, at that time, an interview date. We may have to do it depending on the availability of the candidates. We may not do it all at once. But that would be the goal, I think, is to try to get all the candidates, uh, set up for a remote interview, uh, so that we can do it all at once. But I think we can probably discuss those parameters on Tuesday, correct gentlemen? Mr. Murphy, Mr. Cook?
Sir.
Okay, okay. Is that okay with you Vince?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Okay, so, um, I believe, uh, that's it for tonight. So thank you very much, everyone, for for making, uh, uh, this, uh, meeting and the difficult decisions that we have ahead of us. But that's why we get paid the big bucks, right? So, uh.
Yeah.
Alright, so with that, uh, we will turn the meeting and we'll see you, uh, soon. Everybody stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.